I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in it is well, with liberty and justice for all.
Shannon, will you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Gorola.
Here.
Mayor Protem Villa Senor.
Here.
Mayor Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Brogie.
Here.
Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, approval agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion. I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, public comments. Brandy Hollis. And you know the, you know the, the three minutes and the thirty seconds and...
All right. Hi, you guys. The first thing I'd like to do is ask you to please, for the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, I believe, to add Christopher Carrigan, M.D., from Midtown Medical Group with Community Memorial Health Systems, to the agenda. He would like to come and give you guys a presentation, along with Mr. Carrigan, Conejo Health, Project Understanding. We've been working doing backpack medicine in Ventura with some great success, different type of backpack medicine than you probably think of with the county. Mr. Carrigan is actually an addiction specialist. So what he is able to do is, you know, with the homeless population, one of the major issues is substance abuse. He's able to go ahead and stabilize patients, bring them down off of drugs and alcohol in a safe and sane manner, so we don't have people kicking on the streets, alcohol withdrawing on the streets, and able to keep them sober through various medications, through monthly shots. He is, like I said, more than willing to come out and give a presentation on why it's a great idea, why we should be doing it, why we're doing it in Ventura. Through those conversations, we start them simple, like I brought you guys all a cookie here today. We take them a donut, take them some coffee, get to know the homeless population. Hey, we have a doctor here. Once we get comfortable, do you need medical services? And then we kind of dig deeper. It's a conversation starter. It gets to know our homeless population. We actually have April twentieth, scheduled at nine a.m. Mr. Carrigan will be here in Fillmore doing backpack medicine. It is going to either be covered by his CMH grant, and if his CMH grant does not cover it, he will perform this service pro bono to the city of Fillmore. Once again, I'm asking for him to be on the agenda, and then it looks like I'm getting sure on time. But also with that, Ventura is able to offer a reinfication program through their, you know, downtown Ventura. It's something I think maybe we should look at. With a proper ID, they can check, make sure any homeless population don't have any outstanding warrants of it. They don't have any outstanding warrants, and they have proof that they have a family to go to, they have a place to live, something like that. We're able to offer transportation back home. I know there's two people who are supposed to be getting transportation this week in the park, but they just want to go home to Mexico. They don't want to go to shelter. They don't want to go anywhere but home to Mexico. And I think I have more to talk about, but actually, the city manager and assistant manager have this information. I met with them prior to the meeting, so I'm gonna buzz. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. John Belenos and Carla Belenos? You guys want to speak separately or together?
Do you want to speak first?
I meant, you, your three minutes.
Yeah, I know we only have three minutes, so I'm gonna have to talk real fast.
Okay.
Okay. One was, what's going on with, something I heard about sewer rates being proposed to go up? Is that true?
We will be discussing that on a council meeting on, I think it's, what, Dave? April ninth or seventh?
I'm very interested to be there, because this is something, me and my dad, we're, I'm the owner of Yanni's, and he was adamant to the day he died last year about this water issue. And back then, we were promised certain things. Don't worry, I have a newspaper that says everything with my picture on it. Don't worry, the rates won't go up. If the city expands, the population goes up, there's a higher tax base, all this stuff. And now, what is it, sixteen, seventeen years later, I hear things about this that I can't understand. So we'll, I'll get back to that. I want to ask you also about the homeless issue. You know, they're not, these homeless people are camping out in the river, not too far from my home. This is tough to see this. You know, there's water flowing on both sides. It's not just a matter of, does it look nice? Does it look nice? It makes our town look bad, which it does. It does. But it's a safety issue. I don't know how these people live there. I don't know how safety-wise they're not forced out of there. That's dangerous. I've seen it. I was hearing that river a few weeks ago when it was pouring like crazy. I could hear it from my house across from the park. I live at Rio Vista, where you live, and I could hear that river. And these people are living there. It only takes one time for somebody to get trapped in that water. Next thing you know, they're at the ocean, and it's over. So that's just one very important concern of mine. The other important thing is, if you could think about this, where Rio Vista is, on Heritage Valley Parkway, we have the park across from us. As the population's growing and those new apartments were built, cars are zooming up and down in front of that park. I could say I have a few instances where I'm watching my kids come out into the opening with a car in front of them, and I have to scream "stop" before the car almost hits them. There are bumps on the other side of the, the town, but there, there should be, I think, some speed bumps for that park before some kid gets killed. It's gonna happen, I'm sure of it. I've seen a lot of close calls with kids hitting baseballs over, running out into that street, and cars are flying at night, fifty, sixty miles an hour, I've seen it. Also, on the roundabout, people are flying around that. I don't know if a stop sign needs to be put there. There's a school there. When you're coming down from Mountain View, I used to live in those gated communities, when you come out, you can't even take, you can't go across or take a right turn, because the flowers and the trees are blocking everything. Close calls with accidents, and cars flying down that hill, too. Just something to think about, safety-wise. We don't want anybody to get hurt.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Carla. Just to continue with what my husband was mentioning about the safety, and the circle drive over there in Heritage Valley Parkway is super dangerous. Nobody stops in there, especially in the school hours in the morning. They just go flying there, you know, and people just crossing the street, the same in Heritage. I think we need to put something in there to, to slow the traffic, especially with the new apartments. It's high traffic in that area. About the homeless situation, I am really worried. I like to take my walks in the morning. Already happened to me a couple of times where I see just people jumping, coming up from the river. Okay, the first time was two men. They don't look, they didn't look like with poor clothes or something. They looked bad, no. Thanks God it was other people coming, walking, too, you know, but I was by myself there, like seven forty in the morning, and I was scared. I mean, I stopped my walks in there, because I don't feel safe when I want to walk with my kids, or, so, we are in danger, they are in danger, so I think we, we need to enforce more the homeless situation. In the sewer, we cannot afford all this. We already have a lot with electricity, with the gas, that everybody have that impact in their houses, and these sewers, the more that the town grown, supposed to go down, no up. It's the same service. And this is almost like eighteen years when we get this new system for the sewer, so supposed to go down the cost, not up. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette, did you want to speak at, are you have an agenda item, or are you gonna speak public?
I think I can just do a public comment.
Okay.
Okay, as I was reading through what, things you were gonna be addressing tonight, I, I really like the idea of your reconsidering how we're going to do public comments and stuff, because I know that over the years, I've had so many people say, you know, that they would like to have some...
Sorry to interrupt. So this would be an item to speak on?
So I should, sure.
Yeah, if you have any specific agenda items that you want to save those comments.
I'll just save your comment card up here for that.
Okay, that, that's fine then. Great. Whatever. Thanks.
Okay, seeing there are any more public comments, seeing none, we're gonna move on to consent calendar. Do I have an approval for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, new business.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of the city of Fillmore. Tonight, I'm requesting City Council to approve the first reading for ordinance number two-three-nine-four-six, which would dissolve the Arts Commission by removing the municipal code, Chapter six point one-eight. It would also amend Fillmore's municipal code two point two-eight, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission, to account for additional duties previously assigned to the Arts Commission, and change the name of the newly consolidated commission. The Arts and Commission was established in two thousand and sixteen. There was a chapter created for the municipal code, and the purpose of this was to encourage stimulating and promoting and fostering the cultural enrichment activities of the city. However, with the past few years, the participation and establishment of the commission has been really hard to continue meeting and carrying on those duties. And so, we've met with every current commissioner that is active for both commissions. Before bringing this item forward, we requested information from each commissioner to see what their input would be about potentially combining both, so that we could move forward and operate more efficiently. Each commissioner provided a hundred percent support of us moving in this direction, and they also expressed that if decided by council tonight, they would like to continue serving the community in their current appointments. We currently have three commissioners that are still active in the Arts Commission, Greg Agosteglini, Gabriel Cardenas, and then Luana Barajas. Their terms all expired on January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. And then, we also have two active commissioners in the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is Stephanie Clittage and then Giselle Teller Holt. Their expiration dates for their terms are June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. So their terms are already staggering as well. We would still have to go and recruit for two student commissioners if you approve this tonight. And then, we're asking you to also, if this is considered, to decide how we would like to rename this new commission, whether it be Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission or Arts and Recreation Commission. So that summarizes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just want a quick one with regard to renaming the commission. Did they, somebody from the Arts Commission specifically ask Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission, or were they happy if we go with Arts and Recreation?
We had both, so that's why we're bringing that forward to you. So there was input received from all of them. The majority was okay with the Cultural Arts and Recreation, but there was also input about just taking off the cultural and just doing Arts and Recreation.
My question, thank you, Erica, is about, I don't know how we could do this or would do this. I know it's hard to get folks involved, but also, I know that the boards of our local soccer and little league and softball, who are very active in our recreation use in our fields, are pretty, pretty good, and they're, they're good boards, and I think they usually keep good membership. Is there any way that we could work with them and see if there can be a, maybe even an MOU of, if there could be one member from one of those boards, not, not from all of them, but each year, maybe even rotating, you know, every year, to sit on this commission? And I know that's maybe another question we can answer later, but I would, I would love to see if we can sort of draw a member of one of those sports leagues board members to be a part of the rec. I think that would add a lot to it.
For the rec commission?
Yeah. Does anyone else have any ideas on that?
I have a question with her idea. They would be a non-voting member, wouldn't they? I meant, because they wouldn't be a student. They would just be...
Oh, yeah.
They'd be appointed, but they would be a non-voting partner. I meant, non-voting board member.
Would they have to be if they were on the commission?
Yeah, because we have five on the commission, so we have to have...
Oh, could it have an even number, you mean?
We talked about this previously.
Oh, we did. Okay, I was in part of that conversation.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is accurate, that if they were currently appointed, or, you know, like handpicked in a way, they could be there for advisement, probably, but, but not for, for voting. Otherwise, they would just apply when there's an opening to be appointed in that way, I would think. They could, they could be encouraged in that way, and I think it would probably increase the likelihood of, of future applications to those commissions. But I do think connecting those organizations with, you know, potentially this combined commission is probably a great way forward, and many people have already spoke to me about that.
I have a question for Michael. Would they be required to do a Form seven hundred also, if they were just a non-voting member?
You know, to be honest, I don't, I would expect so, being part of a commission, but I, that's something that I would need to, like, actually research to know. Tiffany would probably know off the top of her head. I would expect so, though.
I just had a question for Christine on a point of clarification. Are you suggesting that we don't combine the two, and with regard to the Parks and Rec pull from these different leagues, the boards?
No, I, I agree with, with combining them. I just would like an additional member, non-voting, if that's how it needs to be, but that is part of this newly formed commission from one of the local rec leagues. Yeah, rec organization boards.
Dave, do you see any issue with that?
I think there might be an issue of us discussing that particular item tonight, because it's not on the agenda specifically. But we could bring that back, and we could vet it, take a look at it, from that standpoint, because we'd want to take a look at it, what are the ramifications of doing that, what are the legalities with that. I think it's a good idea, but tonight, it's not only the specific agenda items discussed. We could bring that back if council would like us to do that.
Sure. I'll mention it in the comments. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I, just to comment to the public in general, I, I've served on a film commission, which we dissolved last month. There's so many opportunities to get involved in the community, and it's kind of disheartening to know that this, we had a lot of interest in the Arts Commission years ago, and it just never even really got off the ground. And it's not because there's a lack of artists in this community. I know that for sure. But, you know, we just need to see some support from the community. I'd love to see that, and just some people that can volunteer a few hours a month to participate in these programs, and I think it will really enhance our community if we can do that. So, thank you.
I think, too, a little bit of echoing there is, hopefully with the possibility of, if we, if we vote to combine them, that it'll be a little bit simpler to advertise and, and kind of draw people in to a single meeting related to all these, these topics. But I do support the idea of it being a Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission, because there are many other activities outside of just arts and recreation that kind of help, again, develop the culture, the small-town culture here in Fillmore, and to help keep that going. It's unfortunate that things like the May Festival have kind of fallen by the wayside, because the service organizations that used to run those events either defunct or, or just haven't continued it, but it's, a lot of it is because either they don't, I think, see the desire for people to, for those events to continue, or even just the support to say, hey, if I put a lot of effort into something like this, it's gonna be worthwhile. So I think that's a benefit also of, of combining it, because people will have kind of a simpler, a single point to kind of go and address the city for these kinds of issues, and then to continue to build community in that way.
Okay. Albert, you have any?
No, everything that I was gonna say has already been said, but I totally agree. I'm leaning towards the Cultural and Arts Commission. I think Chris hit it right on the head, so. Very well said, Chris. Thank you.
And we're gonna call up Lonnie Farr, who has personal experience with this?
Lonnie Farr, yes. I was one of the commissioners for the Parks and Rec. I will tell you that it is needed. It helps the Parks and Rec Department that we have here, who is trying very hard to get a lot of things done. The biggest thing is the dog park, and we're on a standstill with that. And I will tell you that I got a lot of heat, listened to a lot of people, you know, we tried to do as much as we could for the, for the dog park, and it's still at a standstill. So it is kind of frustrating. I've offered people, come on, you know, it's only a couple of hours a month, you know, and unless we're gonna meet up at the Parks depart, I mean, at the dog park or something like that, we didn't do a lot, I mean, that was out of the couple of hours in the meeting. And then, we, if we could, we would like get together and hash out certain things that we needed to do, but it actually would almost, and I don't know if it's kind of giving somebody something, but at one time, there was where we were, we were supposed to get some type of a stipends. I don't know if that'll help get somebody on board, but it's really not that much time, and it's, I've done so much trying to, you know, help everybody, that, you know, it would be nice to see other people in town come and just work a couple of hours, you know, and it would be great. Like, you know, like, I should say, Councilmember Gorola says, you know, I mean, a lot of people think the city is in charge of the May Festival. They think they're in charge of all these things. They're not. And the problem is that a lot of our, sadly, our rotary and all of our stuff, the, the amount of people that are in there are no longer there, or unfortunately, the people have passed. And, I mean, it was sad a couple of years ago to even find out the boys, the Boy Scouts had like three. And it's so, you know, it's, it's trying to bulk everybody back up, and it'd just be nice to have other people help, you know. It's, you know, they say it's always the same people, and it's just, you know, I'd like to see some new people come in, you know. Please, have just a couple of hours to help the city. You know, everybody wants to complain, but nobody wants to do anything about it. So, just my two cents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lonnie.
With that, unless there's any other comments, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Do these both together?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading to introduce ordinance number twenty-three-dash-nine-four-seven-n, rename the commission the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission, and appoint the current commissioners to the consolidated commission.
I think you need to read the ordinance fully, Chris. I meant just the ordinance and the number. I meant just the title.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-three-dash-nine-four-seven, ordinance of the City Council of the, of the state of Fillmore, California consolidating the city, city's arts commission to the, into the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission.
Okay, and you still keep this, this other items as part of that motion, correct? The changing the name and all that?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Tonight's a public hearing. The city hired a company, an expert called Bureau Veritas. They are our company that does all of our plan checking, and anytime we need inspections or, or expert advice, we talk with them. They prepared this item, and I would like to introduce Tony Falcone of Bureau Veritas and explain the new building code. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's nice to be here. Kind of a wet night, some people made it. Anyway, as you know, every three years, the state of California adopts a new set of billing codes, known as Title twenty-four of the California Code of Regulations. These new codes set the minimum billing standards in our state. These standards allow us the luxury of living in the safest nation in the world, where health, life, and safety are minimum standards, not just goals. This is a code adoption cycle year, and the state of California has adopted the two thousand and twenty-two California Building Codes, which modify the international model codes published by the International Code Council, ICC. We are look, we are here today to introduce and discuss ordinance number two-three-nine-four-five, which amends portions of Title Five of the Fillmore Municipal Code and updates the uniform codes adopted by the city by reference, adopting the two thousand and twenty-two California Building, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Fire, Energy, Historical, Residential, Existing, Green Building Standards, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the two thousand and twenty-one Property Maintenance Code, along with adopting local amendments to these codes, and an exemption from SEQA. A lot of codes. The state allows jurisdictions to amend the codes to establish more restrictive building standards, given that the amendments are reasonably necessary because of local conditions. Two types of amendments are allowed: technical amendments and administrative amendments. Technical amendments must be accompanied by findings that local, geological, topographical, and/or climatic conditions necessitate the amendments. Local administrative amendments, unlike technical amendments, do not require findings. The Building and Safety Department is recommending that certain technical changes be made to some of the uniform building codes adopted by the city in order to provide residents with sufficient and effective levels of fire, life, and safety in buildings. These include modifications to the two thousand and twenty-two additions of the California Building, Residential, Plumbing, and Electrical Codes. Other modifications are of an administrative nature or are subjects that are not covered by the codes, or are reasonably necessary to safeguard life and property within the city of Fillmore. The ordinance sets forth findings which are necessary to enable the city to amend the new codes to meet the local, geological, topographical, and/or climatic conditions. Many of the technical changes to the codes are necessary due to the increase in the devastating wind-driven wildfires the city has experienced in the past. The proposed ordinance includes both new and existing past. The proposed ordinance includes both new and existing amendments. The following is a brief summary of the new recommended changes to the codes. New administrative provisions for the California Building Code include Section 107.2.1a, requires applicants for all new structures in additions to include an easement plan. Section 107.2.1b establishes minimum standards for residential and commercial plans submitted to the city for review and approval. New technical provisions to the California Building Code include Section 707a.3.1a, establishes requirements for new residential exterior walls within five feet or less to property lines, and are required to be a minimum of two-hour rated construction. Section 707a.3.1b establishes requirements for exterior siding replacement of any size on existing structures, residential or commercial, within 10 feet or less of property lines or adjacent structures, and shall comply with the fire safe materials required in Section 707a3, which is the high-fire severity zone requirements. Section 708.1.8 establishes requirements for replacement windows, skylights, and doors in existing structures, both residential and commercial, within the city's high-fire severity zone, and shall comply with the fire safe materials required in Section 708a. New technical provisions for the California Residential Code include Section R314.21, establishes requirements that smoke alarms shall be provided in attached, detached garage, I'm sorry, attached and detached garages associated with a residential dwelling unit, and in accessory structures over 120 square feet with electrical power. Section R315.2 establishes requirements that carbon monoxide alarms shall be provided in attached and detached garages associated with residential dwelling unit, and in accessory structures over 120 square feet with electrical power. New technical provisions for the plumbing code. Section 701.2 establishes requirements that all new or replacement underground drainage and waste piping shall be of ABS or PVC material, and this is due to the poor soil conditions locally. It just eats up the cast iron and other materials. Section 715.1 establishes requirements that all new or replacement sewer piping shall be ABS, PVC, or polyethylene, also due to the poor soil conditions locally. And new technical provisions to the electrical code, California Electrical Code. Article 230.1.1 establishes requirements that all newly constructed, commercial, and multifamily buildings shall have underground electrical services. This concludes my summary of the proposed new amendments to the state codes. All other amendments are existing and included in the ordinance to re-adopt them into the Fillmore Building Codes. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this ordinance.
I do have a question. Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's just for my curiosity information. What is a two-hour rated construction? Can you explain that?
There's a lot of ways to achieve that. You can do it versus regular studs and sheet rock, with different layers of sheet rock, which are like type X, they're fire-rated. You can do it with masonry, stucco, concrete, and the code spells out those different ways to do it. But if you had, you know, if you built a wall, it's not insurmountable, but you can't have openings also.
Okay.
So a rated wall is very limited to openings.
Okay, thank you. And my, my next question, this is just from thinking of my own house. Let's see here, about exterior siding replacement of any size. That's replacing siding. I know myself and other folks who have stucco homes might want to do a little facelift.
Sure.
And, and put on siding for the first time. This applies as well?
First of all, what's your address? No, I'm kidding.
I gotta give it to Michael.
And the question was about the siding, like how much area?
It's not siding. It's just the terminology here says replacement siding, but I'm assuming it applies for new siding too, right? Just to make sure that all of these are up to code for standard fires.
Right, right. And if you were within that setback, yeah, you would have to comply.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, stucco would, would probably apply for that situation, depending on the distance.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of materials out there now, too, with cementitious siding materials and so forth.
Thank you. Thanks.
I have one, just clarification for the, the two-hour rating. That's, that's to increase the ability for the structure to sustain a fire for response times, probably, right? Because it's proximity to other structures on other properties?
Correct. And in addition, to also restrict transferring fire from one property, one structure to another, or, yeah, property.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make this motion that, that the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Approved the second reading to adopt ordinance number 23945. Do I need to read the paragraph of the ordinance?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right. An ordinance of the city of Fillmore, California, and many portions of Title V of the Fillmore Municipal Code to update the uniform codes adopted by the city by reference by adopting the 2022 California Building, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Fire, Energy, Historical, Residential, Existing Building, Green Building Standards Codes, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and adopting local amendments to these codes, and an exemption from SEQA.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 7C, City Council Discussion of Relocating the Council's Comment Period on the City Council Agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last city council meeting, city council authorized staff to come back with a report to have we discuss moving the public comment, or city council comment period from item, looks like item eight or nine, up to right behind public comments, so they can respond if necessary to any public comments that are made at nighttime. We did a survey of the various cities within Ventura County. It's about 50/50, where they have their public comments. Their half have them right after, the public comments and city council comments right afterwards. The other half have them currently how we, how we do at the end of the agenda. And Simi Valley has a city council comment period at the beginning, after public comments, and at the end of the agenda as well. So we'll leave it up to the city council to discuss it and provide direction to staff, and we'll make any changes you'd like to see.
Any questions for Dave? Saying none, I'll call up Annette Sula.
Hi, I'm Annette Sula. Glad to be here. Glad for the new council, new year. Good stuff. Okay. For a long time in these meetings, we, I have heard many people comment, and even I've, myself have said it, you know, it's like, when we get up for public comments, there's dead silence up there. You're not allowed to speak to us at that time at all. And so it's, it's sort of, we feel like maybe it's falling on deaf ears, or did you hear us, or are you going to respond, or whatever. And I have been to most of the city councils in this area, and the ones that have it differently, it seems to be more interactive with the community. And so I would highly recommend that you go with something that would be a little bit more field, a little more interactive with us, so that, you know, we know we're working together. Okay? Thanks.
Any other comments by council?
Yeah, since I wasn't one of the ones that, that proposed it, but I, I want to echo a little bit of what Annette said, but mostly to just say that it's, it's less about the interaction, but more about the, the time to at least acknowledge even just like that the person, person is speaking to us. And I think any good communication, there, there's immediate feedback, or, you know, responsive feedback, and, you know, depending on what we have on the agenda, it could be hours before we even acknowledge that they're sitting in the room again. And some people, you know, stick it out and stay for the whole meeting, which I applaud them, but it's not in being good with the use of their time, or taking their time to come out and speak on maybe a particular item that wasn't on the agenda. Now, I'm not proposing, or I wasn't with the idea that we would discuss that item, because it even happened earlier where Dave brought it. We can add that to a future agenda. But it's, it's important, I think, for the community to understand that, that we hear them, and that their concerns are at least being considered, even if, if we agree as a council that, that we're not going to put it on a, a future agenda item. They at least understand that. So that's part of what I was hoping in proposing that, was that we would just move the opportunity for us to, to make comments. I, I don't see a whole lot of value to also having us make comments at the end, our own comments outside of our committee reports and whatnot. So if we're going to speak kind of off the cuff about, you know, whatever's on our mind, or whatever the community has spoken about, that it should happen at that time, and then we can kind of keep it to the business on the agenda from there on out, is what I think.
Okay, but in getting to Annette's point, I don't see how it's going to permit us to speak to the things that are not on the agenda during our comment session. What, I'm missing something here.
I, I think what he's trying to say is, like, for example, somebody makes a comment, we'd like to put this on the agenda. We could address it in that part, and put it on the agenda as the next item. I meant, you don't, that, is that where you're heading?
No, 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 not, not as the next item, but we.
I meant, well, we do, we do public comments, and we, we'd approve an agenda item for the next meeting.
Yeah, or, or not approve.
Okay.
It's, it's just at least considering it for, for the members of the community that have taken the time to come and speak on public comments, not related to a specific agenda item. So they understand that they're being listened to, and, and then they can look forward to coming maybe to a future meeting where the discussion will actually happen.
Okay, so your proposal is that, for example, tonight's agenda item number nine, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments, be moved up to what is currently this evening, number five, after number five. So this would become item number six.
Well, Dave, I don't know if, it would just be the city council comments, just the comments, not the reports and everything else that goes along with it. I don't, is that what you had proposed in the report, correct, Dave?
Eight is committee, commission, and board reports. Nine is city council reports, recommendations, and comments.
Okay, yeah, I guess, yeah, to conflate those two, but yeah, it would just be moving that whole item.
Okay, and, yeah, I just want to make sure that the community understands that it will not allow us to still, to even address at that point, any comments that are made. We, I think the, the word is briefly. We can briefly comment, is that right, Michael? We can briefly comment on something, which means, you know, barely anything. But if it's not agendized for that evening, then, you know, we can't discuss it. It's a possibility we could put it on a formal agenda, yeah.
And I think that a good example of that was our last meeting. A member of the community came up and talked about how she thought it was odd that her water bill was high when she was on vacation, and brought up similar concerns that, that we may have heard this evening. And the mayor just spoke to clarify, you know, that that was something that was going to be discussed in the future, you know, and just immediately allays any concerns that they have, and then we move on.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So my comment is, you know, speaking in favor of this move. And, and I, I say also, like you said, Councilmember Gorilla, to just be able to say, number nine, the agenda number nine, agenda item number nine, is also very much about what we want to bring up in the community. So it's our time to speak about an upcoming event, or, or something that we, we noticed, just a comment that we want to make as well. And I think, I think those are the nuggets, especially if it's not an agendized item. I think those are the nuggets of information that the community likes to hear. And for the folks that are here in the room particularly, but also just thinking of the folks who are watching live, you know, via the city's YouTube or Facebook Live, for them too, to get sort of more information from council members a little bit earlier on, and in a more compact way in their, in their night, if they're watching, you know, if they're watching, watching us. So I'm, I'm in favor of that, and like you said, keeping the business item of where we report on our formal committees, commissions, and boards to the end. That's fine with me. And, and one more thing is that, of course, on all the agenda items, right, like if there's something later in the agenda that has to do with a pertinent issue, the council, you know, part of our, what the mayor does is he says, okay, is there any council member comments on this agenda item? And so, you know, the public will have to wait for our comments on those. And so, you know, that just happens to be how the agenda goes. But for non-agendized items that we want to speak on, clarified, I think it's, I think that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak and say that I'm totally in favor of this item, too. It's a good point. And a lot of times, as Chris mentioned, audience members do get the feeling that maybe what they're saying is not being heard, and if we have a chance to respond then and there, then their concerns will be eased. So I think it's a good move.
Okay, we don't, we don't need a motion. We just need to give direction, correct?
Yeah, if the.
If we're all in, we're all in agreement.
If there's a council consensus giving direction to staff is fine. If there is like some uncertainty about the numbers or what direction, then.
So everybody's fine with it?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item number eight, Committee, Commission, and Board Reports.
Okay, I'll, I'll go on one. It's actually not a, not a commission that I am a part of, Councilmember Brogie is, but I just wanted to let the public know that I did speak at public comment for the Ventura County Transportation Commission. They were actually having their strategic plan, and it looked like it was going to be a very good meeting. But I, I spoke to the commission to really hone in and, and really push the commission to do good outreach, culturally appropriate, language-wise also, about the new bus route that will start going over Grimes Canyon, that will go for the first time ever from Fillmore to Moore Park and back. And so they plan to roll this out later in the, I think, late summer, early fall. And, and I told them that, you know, just speaking from the city, that we want to be active partners, and, and Councilmember Brogie will keep us up to date on how that goes. Thanks.
Yeah, the, the last, and thank you so much for attending that meeting that I couldn't attend. But at the prior meeting, the issue, the subject of the bus going over Grimes did come up, and at that point, they were talking probably not till the first of next year. So, but that keeps, who knows? Who knows how that'll work? Anything else on that one? I have met a couple of different times now with the Santa Paula, I can't, never remember the name of the train. Anyway, had an in-depth meeting, maybe an hour-long meeting in Santa Paula with the owner of the Sierra branch line, as well as the, his, the person that's here on, locally, is here all the time. And primarily, we were discussing some of the issues with regard to the track, since we can't, the train can't move now coming further this direction because of the, the bridge that's down over the Sesapee. And there's been a lot of concerns about the graffiti on the cars. But their assertion is at this point that they, they have to leave the cars there until the bridge, bridge gets repaired, because they've started, if you haven't seen this yet, these, what do you call them? Rail, rail cars?
Right, rail bikes.
Rail bikes, rail bikes. Anyway, it's, it's interesting. They're a two-person, looks like a go-kart that goes on the tracks. And it's, I think it's, they're taking reservations now. From my perspective, it's a bit on the pricey side, but leave that to our community to decide. But, so that's starting up. So they use the track all the way up to where the trains are stopped, the cars are stopped, and can't go any further. So, because our suggestion was, let's move those cars back where they aren't as close to Fillmore, and into some more of a desolate area between here and Santa Paula. And they said that would interfere with these bike trail, rail cars, whatever they are. So it would impede that program. So they don't want to do that. So we're working with them on that issue. And then I also wanted to let council know that there is a ledge Zoom meeting tomorrow that starts at noon, I believe, and you can still register, but it's got a lot of the new legislation coming down the pike from Sacramento, that we all need to give feedback to the League of California Cities to say, do we want to support this legislation, or do we want to oppose this legislation? And then the league then acts as our lobbyists, and will fight for or against legislation that we think is either good or bad. And I've, this is one of my pet peeves about what's happening recently in Sacramento, is where they're just writing so many pieces of legislation that are either nonsense, in my opinion, or they're taking away local control from our, the municipalities themselves. So it's really, really important that we stay engaged in talking to council members here, and we need to spread this information to the community, because we need to reach out on a lot of these pieces of legislation to our representatives, our, our state representatives, Monique Limone and Steve Bennett, depending on where we live. So anyway, it's, I'll report back again at the. So anyway, it's, I'll report back again at the next meeting as to what pieces of legislation were brought forward from the league. And if, please, if anybody has any questions about any of this legislation, if you want some examples, don't hesitate to give me a call or shoot me an email and I'll, you know, update you on whatever is really concerning to me. And I think it'll be concerning to the citizens of Fillmore as well. So. You know, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to item number.
I do have one, sorry. Just to maybe address some of the, the current information that was communicated to residents about the public hearing on April 11th. From everything that we've reviewed, there's, I believe, there's no proposed changes to the sewer rate, correct? Just the water structure? Okay. And those proposed rates, obviously, we're not going to like discuss public comments or anything right now, but the public hearing will discuss what those rates are from the meeting that we had earlier in January. So that anyone can talk to those, any concerns or, you know, what their opinions are about it. But I don't know if there's time before the next water bill, before that hearing, to put maybe a little more simpler language in the water bill to say exactly what it's about. That could be beneficial to the community.
And if they want to expand it view, they could pull the report off the city's webpage. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine, city council reports, recommendations and comments.
All right, I have a few. I'll start off. Okay, back, let's see here. Back in August, our Parks and Rec Department sort of gave a priority list of what, where we needed updates and renovations and things for our parks. And so it's raining right now, but in just a few months, it's going to be blistering hot. And one of those recommendations that covered three of the parks, because Rio Vista already has it, is a shade structure for our kids over the Two Rivers Playground, the Shields Playground and the Dolores Day Playground. Rio Vista has a, has a beautiful one. It's not too old. So we've been talking about the dog park. It's going to be on another agenda. But I would like to bring forward and see with my fellow, with mayor and fellow council members, considering putting this on an agenda to fund this and to try and get this before our hot summer. I know there's other things too. We got to look at the bathroom updates and other parts. And we're going to have a bigger discussion on that. But I see this as being sort of of the moment. And we have, we have the funds. We have, we could possibly use ARPA funds. We could possibly use general funds. And this is looking for shade structure for three of the, of the, of the parks, of our playgrounds. So I wanted to put that forward and see if I have support on that. Can I check in now or keep talking?
Okay, so it sounds like you're looking to have a future.
To agendize, talking about those particular shade structures.
Shade structures at the parks that don't have it.
Funding shade structures and seeing about getting them, getting them up before summer.
Okay, I'll support the, putting that on a future agenda.
I would as well, you know, not hoping that we can come up with funding for something like that. And even if it's, my guess is it's going to still be raining come July, but we'll use it as a rain shelter. So, yeah, but I'd like to at least have it for discussion on a future agenda.
Yes, it's agendized.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate, sorry, I had a couple, a couple more things too. It's, we're, just want to let the public know that we are going to have once again a health and wellness fair. The city of Fillmore will sponsor, along with Fillmore Unified School District. Last year, we had it in front of the district offices on Sespe and it was a great fair. And we're just trying to build momentum and we're looking at May 20th. May happens to be Mental Health Awareness Month, and so this is a fair that brings resources to our community, not just about mental health, but just overall health, nutrition, wellness, a lot of resources. So we'll have more information and I'll talk more about it as we, as the date gets closer.
I have a question. For the health and wellness fair, is it going to be the 5K too?
It's not going to be the 5K this year. Yeah, Rotary, unfortunately, like we were talking about just, you know, membership and, and the person who, who has helped to put it on, just not able to do it this year, but they're hoping to come back the following year. Yeah, I know, I know Albert being a runner, that would have been great. And I would do it too. Okay, my last one is, and it's interesting that we talked about the May Festival and mentioned it a little earlier. I just want to pull up something really quick on my phone. Okay, I got a very nice email from a high school student. I won't name them, but here in Fillmore, and she goes to Fillmore High School. She says, as you know, Fillmore hasn't had an annual May Festival since 2018 and we all miss it. The May Festival is one of the biggest events of the year in our town. It was a time when we all can come together as a community and have an amazing experience with one another. Whether it was going on the rides, sharing a funnel cake with a friend, or listening to the live music, we loved it all. I'm sure we can all agree that it hasn't been the same since COVID hit us. Our town hasn't been the same. I believe that if we have the May Festival this year, she happened to write this year, it will do wonders for Fillmore and bring us together as a community once again. And she goes on a little bit. So what I would like to see happen, if we can, and, and we could bring it again for an agenda item, I'd love to see if we can possibly just bring a meeting together, hold a meeting space for stakeholders, including ourselves, but also the business community, the service clubs, the nonprofits, the sheriffs, who I know have been really wonderful about security at the May Festival in the past. And basically hosting a meeting that one gives historical background, invite people who maybe are new to town and they don't know about the May Festival, give a little background about what it does. And the object of the meeting would not be to, you know, say, we're going to do it. Of course, it wouldn't be happening this May at all, but that now would be the time to plan. Is what would it take money wise, resource wise, time wise, people wise, to bring it back? And basically just see if we can have a meeting that we list out, this is what it takes to put on the May Festival. We know it was something the chamber did before and we don't have a chamber now. We do have the Fillmore Association of Business, Business is fab. But, you know, that's just something that I'd like to see if we could be a convener.
Yeah, I could support that because that's just part of our, to me, the May Festival means a lot. You know, I remember taking my kids there when they were little and so that's just something that I support. And I'd like to talk about and get our stakeholders in town involved. So I'd support that.
I'd also support, you know, hosting a meeting of expectations. I think it would be really good though if it might happen at the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission level. And that would be a great way to highlight that commission and really have a more of a focal point for those kinds of events for their consideration. It might be kind of a big project, so it might, you know, require a little bit of guidance at first, but that might be the best place for that kind of a discussion to happen.
I agree with that, Chris.
I'm okay with it, but I don't think it's pullable. You can, you can't pull it off this year.
Oh, no, no, no. I wrote that, she wrote that. No, I'm sorry if that was confusing. She wrote that. I just wanted to read it. But no, this would be something that we would have a meeting hopefully now to talk about a year from now.
Or is this something we can kick down to like you were saying, the arts and, the arts and the new commission?
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
I would take it off our burden and put it on them. I meant, if you guys.
But I think we can, we can give directive to the new commission and you say, you know, let's make this one of your top priorities, at least looking at it, setting up an informational meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Dave, can we put that on their agenda? Their first agenda?
You have spoken. Yes, we will get the information out with the new, the new commission and staff that handles it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, any other council members? Okay, with that, we're moving to the city manager. City manager verbal report.
There's a couple, a couple of updates tonight. The dog park, we do have the cost back that we share with city council. Staff is dissecting the proposal right now to hopefully can bring back something that is palatable for city council to go forward on in terms of the dog park. We're also talking with a grant writer to see if we might be able to qualify for grant funding for the project. It doesn't give you a clue of how expensive this project potentially is. So we're going to try to come back with different options for you at the March 28th meetings, kind of we're shooting for right now, to meet the minimum, open the dog park up to the grand plan that was designed overall by the Parks Commission and the community input. So we'd be planning to think about on the March 20th, council meeting that night, March, March 28th. And then the other item, as we're going to talk a little bit about, here are a lot of comments in the community regarding the water and sewer potential increases. The sewer increase, there is no sewer increase for the next five years. There was not a sewer increase for the previous five years. So if this goes forward, it'd be 10 years without an increase at all for your sewer rates. The water currently, you get 10 units. It's around $44. Whether you use all 10 units or not, you're paying for the 10 units. So if you use two units, you're paying for the total amount. One thing we're doing now is we have gone back to make it more equitable, so it's fair for everybody who's using the water. You're paying for what you're used now. So essentially, we have a $25 minimum that's on there. And then you'll be paying approximately $4 per unit moving forward. If you use your current amount of allotted water of 10 units, your bill would increase by $4.20 a month. However, if you cut your water back, you'll be saving money at that point in time. So it's again, it comes back down to the individual homeowner, the property owner, how much water they want to use. They can control that aspect of it to where now you're paying, whether you use one unit, two units, you're paying the full 10-year price. Then obviously for over 10 years, you're paying for that additional cost. So that's the, the big difference out there right now. And then we'll go back again and take a look at it. So this has been looked at by our professional staff, who live in financial, took a look at it, doing all the potential projects coming out, the number of customers in-house. And this is the way that we're going to be moving forward to again, so that people can control their own water usage within their houses. Sewer is going to stay the same. And we're pretty happy to say that where most communities have had to raise their water and sewer rates over the years, ours will be flat. And again, if the, the water rates will stay at the same rates for five years as well. So for the next five years, it's going to stay the exact same, just like the sewer. So it's kind of what they're talking about, the water staying, won't go down, pretty much stays level with the amount of growth we've had in town. It's not necessarily going to go down, but it flattens out. And we'll, I mean, we adjust again in five years. So that's kind of the, all in a nutshell right there. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 11, closed session. The council will go into closed session to, because of the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in five cases. So we're going to go into closed session. We'll be back. So we're going to go into closed session. We'll be back.